I want to thank all of you for being here. While you got caught traffic, which is, ah, you go next. And I'm glad you're here to witness and get started. I want to ask for motion to adjourn.
My second.
Your second. Is there any changes to this agenda? I'd like to say hi.
Ah.
Next is, um, Paul Holton.
Dr. Akoji?
Yeah.
And to Duncan? Julia Fisher?
Here.
Joanna Greaves?
Here.
Joanna Hinton?
Here.
Anita Murphy?
Here.
Brenda Rose?
Here.
Alexa?
Here.
Next time we have on here is the three previous weeks. Then it's all the, we'll go to conference. We will explain it. That's separate. We just, there's a discussion on.
Well, we have our speakers in the room. Thank you all for being patient with the traffic. I know folks had a little bit of trouble getting here this afternoon. Glad folks made it safely. On your agenda is a discussion about the assessment and accountability framework 4.0. I know we have had that on the agenda for many months now and always put it at the tail end. So I wanted to give you all plenty of time today to hear those latest updates and also contribute to that conversation and ask any clarify questions that you may have. Also, at your request, I will be joining Dr. Sapper to talk a little bit about senior capstone projects and specifically providing you a few sample rubrics as well that come from two of our school districts, through different regions of the state. So I'm going to welcome Dr. Gember Sapper, our new associate commissioner. She's not new to the agency by any means, but associate commissioner of the Office of Assessment and Accountability at the department to talk a little bit about the framework 4.0 for assessment and accountability. We do have one online member, so.
Okay.
Thank you for listening.
Okay.
Wonderful. Should I stand anywhere in particular? Or should you?
Our 360 camera will pick you up.
And again, thank you again. I'll echo that. Thank you for your patience to getting here. It just seemed like everything was at a standstill. So, but what's not standing still is assessment accountability. So we are in now for four years. So we've been talking about the Kentucky United We Learn Initiative and I'm sure that Sarah has kept you up to date on all the many activities that are happening. And we really got into the situation that we are now ready to advocate for the change. It's been a process where we've been learning about what is happening in other states, other countries. We went back and looked at what happened in Kentucky during the 90s and since then and what was learning and what were the obstacles that turned in care and those, the beginnings of assessment accountability for Kentucky. So we've been in this process where we have learned. We have done our due diligence to gain our background knowledge and move forward with some prototypes and some frameworks.
Here's the, this is the overview that we should have here. Council that shows Dr. Fletcher and the two superintendent. One might explain it a little bit, so you are welcome to play it or we can skip on.
So while Sarah is trying to get the video with the Kentucky United We Learn Council, we've, as I mentioned, we've been at the council for about four years now. We received a grant in 2022 to, for this work. So the grant from the federal government is a competitive grant on state assessments has funded the work for the Kentucky United We Learn Council. And so it has been a process where we've been meeting with a group of stakeholders for their input. Um, with the, with the Kentucky United We Learn Council, we, it's a group of stakeholders from various backgrounds and demographics. We wanted to make sure that voices were at the table that were generally not at the table. So we've had students, we've had teachers, we've had administrators, we've had representatives from our general camp, general assembly involved in across. We've had parents, community members from all types of backgrounds because we want to know what they want to see out of their schools. And what has bubbled up is three big topics or priorities. The first one is vibrant learning experiences for every student. And there's a definition for vibrant learning experiences that the Kentucky United We Learn Council created, which Sarah knows by heart, but it's, it is experiences and learning that is meaningful and relevant to our students. So we're really trying to, with this accountability system, we're trying to leverage those and encourage the spread of vibrant learning experiences to each and every student and each and every school, no matter if they're in elementary, in the smallest of our learners, to the high school, the oldest of our learners. And so we're really trying to expand those experiences for our students. The other priorities are encouraging innovation, especially around assessments. We have various types of assessments that we give at the state level, but shifting those, those assessments to the local level and providing them some flexibility at the school level to create their own more authentic demonstrations of learning and hold that up for our students, our parents, our communities to see the good things that's happening within our schools. And then finally, the bold new future for our schools with collaborations with communities. And this is the piece that is the most different on our, of our systems and where we will get the most input from our communities and drive the change that our communities want to see out of their local schools. We're talking about creating local accountability systems and bringing together local measures of success that the community members want to see out of their schools. And so that, that local accountability piece is the most exciting part of the reimagined accountability and system. Now, said a little bit about the Kentucky United We Learn Council. Again, it was made up of a group of stakeholders that were interested. It's been led by the Kentucky Department of Education. We facilitated the discussions, but the, the driving force and the, the voices that we've heard come from those members of the Kentucky United We Learn Council. They've taken into consideration and had a lot of learning from what they call the local labs of learning. And Sarah and her innovative specialists have led the, the work around innovation in these local labs. Those local labs of learning are schools or districts that have taken charge and led the initiative for these vibrant learning experiences and developing those local accountability systems and their labs of learning so that other schools and district leaders can come to those labs, the schools and learn from their, and what they're doing and also learn what worked well and so maybe some of the obstacles that the local lab of learning has faced in development of their vibrant learning experiences that local accountability. So here's a bit of the background. We've, again, there, there's a lot that happened before the summer of 2024, so back in here, we had lots of, of input and development from our stakeholders. We've, we went out back in 2020 with a keep stop survey. And we asked, what does, do people want to keep? What's going well in their education system? What would like, they like to start? And then what would they like to stop? So keep, stop, start. What would they like to? So that, that as well as a coalition, a Kentucky coalition of advancing education in Kentucky, they together did some interviews, empathy interviews that led to what we call the Kentucky United We Learn Report. And those brought forward those three big priorities. So that's been the foundation of which we've been doing the work now for so long and brought us to where we are. Now, in summer 2024, so literally a year ago, we put together what we called a prototype. It was, the first prototype was shared in May of 2024. And the prototype was just an, an outline of what systems could look like for assessment and accountability. Now, let me, let me talk about those two pieces because oftentimes they are thought of as one, but they're actually two different systems. So if you think about assessment, assessment system, that is, think about the test that the students take. Think about their reading test, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. Think about their lab, their science, such as, those are the, the, the state assessment system. The accountability system, separate although really reliant on those assessments, are how we hold schools accountable. Things such as post-secondary readiness or graduation rate, those indicators of quality of our schools. So two separate systems, but interrelated. So the, the prototypes and then put together what a structure could look like for both assessment and accountability. So we developed, we had a Kentucky United We Learn Council convening in April. We put together that first prototype and put it back out to the, the Kentucky United We Learn Council. We thought we understood what they were saying, but when you take somebody else's thought and you try to put it on paper, you may not get the, get it right the first time. So we sent the, the first prototype to the United We Learn Council and they quickly told us we, we needed to change a few things and we did. And so that was the inspiration for the prototype 2.0. So prototype 2.0, we shared again in summer of 2024, but this time more broadly. We put it out to educators, superintendents, anyone that would read it and we put it into their inbox or we put, and we posted it on the website. So with 2.0, we did a lot of engagement feedback. We had a survey that anyone could complete on the aspects of that, that prototype. Sarah led interviews with both L3s, the local labs of 18 L3 districts, as well as non-L3 districts. So we had interviews with them, getting their reaction. We also had experts in the field of education and measurement provide feedback in the, the form of research and memos on that 2.0. So a lot of, of iterations from the prototypes because we wanted it to be what Kentuckians want out of an assessment in a separate accountability system. So, so a lot of iterations through development of the prototypes. Then, once we got to August, it was, uh, 2024, we had our fourth prototype. That then we started then narrowing down. So those were the big concept, the big framework, and then we started to get more detailed. And so with the frameworks, we started with framework 1.0 and literally it was an iterative process. We put it out, get input, we bring it back and make those updates. Because again, we want this to be what Kentuckians said they want as an assessment and accountability systems. So we went into the study phase in fall 2024, that was part of that. And then the, the, the council recommended to the Kentucky Department of Education. We took it to the Board of Education and we're now, we've engaged the General Assembly in multiple ways over the course of the, the past year. They have been invited, key legislators have been invited to the council meetings and we've had them show up. We have one member of the General Assembly, Representative James Tipton, who is a member of the Kentucky United We Learn Council. So he comes to the, the meetings, he's actively engaged with the conversations and with the understanding. So he's been an advocate for us during that time. Our commissioner, Dr. Robbie Fletcher, has been currently meeting with, individually with legislators and talking with them about the, the key components framework 4.0. So we're, again, we're here now in the advocacy phase because we have received the feedback from our stakeholders and we feel like that this is homegrown. It is what Kentuckians want in an account, again, assessment accountability system. Our goal is the moon, we're, we've got this moonshot, which is to build a prosperous Kentucky. We will launch an accountability system that is meaningful and useful to all learners. So that was, again, a, a development from the Kentucky United We Learn Council. And it was important for it to be, again, meaningful and useful to our learners. The goal is that we have legislation for consideration in the 2026 legislative session. So this coming January, we want to have a bill sponsored that supports this work. So we, I've talked, oh, I've talked about the, the iterative process of development, again, surveys, focus groups, reports, and we've, we have now an approved framework 4.0. Now, with one of the, the many ways that we got input from stakeholders was in, over the course of January and February of this year, we conducted and held a series of town halls. We had nine in all. And if you remember Mac, what kind of, of January did we have? His eyes, it was horrible. It was terrible.
I'm a Minnesota girl, loved it.
Right. It was, it was, it was beautiful when you didn't have to travel in. It was lovely in that regard. But we were able to have all nine of our regional town halls in person. So that was an accomplishment right there. We're really proud of the fact that we had a wonderful experience with our town halls. And we took version of framework 2.0 into our, our town halls. So coming out of the, the town halls, we updated prototype to 4.0. But during, during that time, we got to meet and talk with 600 people across Kentucky who were interested in, in this initiative. They were hosted by the regional town halls. Our commissioner was able to attend all of these. Sarah's wonderful staff did a presentation on the vibrant learning experiences and what that looks like, what we look like in, in our schools. We had, the, the stars though of the show in, were the districts that came and talked about what they're doing in their local accountability system and the, the journey that they had taken. So it's one thing for Sarah and I to get up and talk about what's happening in a district. It's quite another for those districts to come up and say, this is what we've done. This is what we've accomplished and here's the benefit of it and here's where we are in our, in, in this journey. So they were, they were the absolute rock stars of, of town halls. Then I presented 2.0 and then we facilitated questions and answers what people liked about the, that tech framework 2.0, what they didn't like, the suggestions that they had. And again, those suggestions were inspiring framework 3.0. So you can see the common themes here about what we had presented. Okay. So now you have, you have the framework 4.0. So that's what you have in your hands. So let's, let's look at what Kentuckians have said they want in these systems. And again, we have the, the moonshot, the launch of accountability system that's meaningful and useful. What they said they wanted was they wanted to get away from standardization and the standard tests for all subjects and instruction that is around the test. They wanted students to be the center of any of our systems so that they have more voice and more autonomy on what they learn so that it's, it's meaningful to them, that it's very engaging for them so that they see the relevance of what they're learning and where they want to be. That students have the, the ability to demonstrate skills in various ways. Not all students can take a test and, and do well on it. And students express themselves in various ways. And we heard in that, that vibrant learning experiences and the demonstrations, I think Sarah's going to talk a little bit about one way of those demonstrating that vibrant learning experience. They wanted to get away from the comparison where the schools feel like they are competing with each other and work more toward collaboration with each other and have partnerships across, across districts and across the Commonwealth. One of the, the meetings that we had, I had a superintendent raise his hand and he said, you know, when I have my heart attack, I don't care if it's a student from my school. I just want the best heart doctor or the best surgeon. So, you know, building that collaboration that my students don't have to, I, I'm not going to keep everything to myself, but I'm going to share and we're going to share resources. We're going to share ideas, we're going to share ways and overcome obstacles. And so really bringing together collaboration and local innovation where community members, community members come together and discuss how they want to hold their school accountable for the, the learning and the opportunities that they have in, in their school and their school is offering. So as school board members, you would have a vital part in that, that conversation because you represent your, your constituents, you would be very involved in those types of meetings and setting some of those local priorities. Now, a couple of things that we've heard that districts are doing to give you an idea what local accountability can look like, separate from state accountability, is we have one, one school district that holds themselves accountable for the credentials that they are graduating students or the number of credentials, like micro credentials or post-secondary readiness indicators of such attainment of dual credit and things of that nature. Another school district has determined that social emotional learning support is important for their school district to have. So in their local accountability system, they said, we want to know how, what type of supports our students are receiving for, for mental and emotional health. Now, that's not something that the state could hold schools accountable for because that would get into funding and equity issues. But a local district could say, and a local community could prioritize those types of things for their schools, whereas the, the state really wouldn't be able to do that. So it gives that local innovation and, and that ability for communities to come together and determine what their local priorities are beyond what the state holds themselves accountable for. So it would be a local decision. So building that local accountability system where that the, the school district could share on a website through very public transparent pages, what they accomplish and what, what those stories are at the district or, or school level. So that communities can understand where they are in the process of, of attaining that local priority. That local accountability system also gives our schools the opportunity to celebrate the things that they are doing in their schools. Because oftentimes I hear that we're doing a lot of good stuff, but it's not being reflected in the accountability system. We've got all this, these good things going on at our school district, but it's not showing up on this, the state school report. So that local accountability system gives the district the opportunity to share those stories and lift up and celebrate the good things that are happening in their local school district. And then networks of, of support, looking at bringing districts together to review each other's accountability system and bringing in also a, an external group to give feedback. Not to say, yes, you know, your system, you know, meets or complies or something like that, but offer suggestions and also maybe connect districts that are, are facing similar challenges and they can overcome challenges together. So having that, again, that collaboration and working toward that support for each other. Okay. So then we have the local accountability system and state accountability system. So this is two parts of accountability. Let's start here with the one on the white in the blue, the state accountability indicators that meet federal requirements. As it stands today, with the, every student succeeds at, requires the same thing that, that we've had in the past. We're still requiring assessments in reading, math and science, as well as a state accountability system that different, meaningfully differentiates our schools. So over here on the right, these would be standardized. This would be a state accountability system that you've been used to seeing with a few differences. First, we'll do away with the color rating. So gone are those red, blues, green. Yes, that would be their first thing to go. That would be the first thing to go. Then have indicators. So these, these first few here, these first few bullets. these first few bullets are about accountability and this last one here is about the assessment. So looking at the, the state accountability system, these would be the same indicators that we would use for every school. Because we still have to offer supports, we still have to identify those schools that have the lowest performing students. That, um, CSI, the word of continuous support and improvement schools, still have to identify those because ESSA is still in place. So we would use the same measures to, to identify those schools for support. So that would include, um, some of us' performance in reading and math, uh, and individual, uh, student growth. So individual student growth, looking at where we, we, the school receives the students and then where they take the student. Yeah, on performance in reading and math. So looking at specifically, for example, um, third grade reading schools compared to the fourth, the same student, fourth grade reading schools. And seeing the growth that they have on that, that state assessment. And then looking at that from all students in that school and bringing that, uh, to the, as an, a, an indicator for that state accountability. Then the other, the other pieces remain the same. Transition readiness would still include your college admissions exam, uh, your dual credit, your college, and your career measures that students, um, at the high school level demonstrate that they're ready to move on, whether they're ready for work or they're ready for college. And graduation rate still remains, um, both the four year as well as that important five-year rate, because we want in Kentucky to celebrate the hard work of those students and those educators that get those students to that fifth-year graduation. English language progress is the, um, the growth of students in, that are attaining English, the English language. So it's our indicate, the indicator that this school is providing supports for those students that are learning the English language and the growth of those students from one year to the next. And then finally, the, uh, the last indicator part, the climate and safety survey. And this is a student perception, the survey that students would take and give input on, um, how they feel, what their perceptions are toward, um, their school. Now, you'll notice what's missing from this list, this is in our current accountability system, is science, social studies and writing scores. Okay, not in, that adds to the score. But what we heard from our council is that they wanted to reduce it to the federal requirements of ESSA. In, in science, social studies and writing do not have to be in the, the formal accountability system. It may be reported on the public school report. Tested, but ain't been recorded. So the council, um, has, has said that, that, that science, social studies and writing is not, they have to be in that formal state accountability system. We do have to test it, we do have to report it, but we don't have to include it in the, um, the accountability. So the students, uh, would take a science assessment and scores would maybe be reported, but not included. Now, that is the, the state accountability system, that means the federal guidelines. And now, again, the most exciting piece is that local accountability system. Uh, where the determination from our community members would drive the indicators of, of the local accountability system. So there's flexibility in administration and inclusion, uh, those locally determined indicators. Like I gave you, uh, just a couple examples, there's many, many more that, um, districts could look at. They, they would bring community members in, have discussions about what their local priorities are for that school or in district. So they would bring, determine what they want as an indicator in the local accountability system. Interim assessments in, uh, reading and math, that is part of that innovative assessments. Right now, um, would, the local schools are purchasing their own local, local interim assessments and reading and math. And, uh, they could include that, um, in their local accountability system as a, an indicator of growth. They may not want to. However, the state is, uh, looking to provide an, an interim assessment system in reading and math that's aligned to the Kentucky academic standards. So, um, that, that in itself is a, a different approach, because, uh, we're, we're going, if this is funded, then the state would offer those, those two assessments that the schools could decide or opt into if they so chose to, to go the direction of opting into those, uh, interim assessments. Or if they wanted to stay with their own, then the, this district would pay for that. If they opted into the state's, then the state. And then also the off-grade science testing, uh, offering, because we support and believe science is such an important aspect, we would offer science at those off grades. So the off grades, uh, other than the science assessment here for, for state accountability. So those off grades would be like, um, three, grade three, grade four, grade six, seven, nine grade. So offering those as an opt-in piece if the, the school so chose. And then, uh, including in the local accountability. So there's flexibility in administration as well as flexibility in inclusion in your local accountability. And then the last piece here, uh, are required button options. Um, I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll talk about the social studies and writing and I'll turn it over to you for. Um, so required would be, uh, that the school or district would include of writing and social studies in the local accountability system. But there would be some options for the, the school, if they so chose and have the capacity to build their own assessment in those two content areas. They could do that. Develop more authentic demonstrations of writing, more authentic demonstrations of social studies and include that in their local accountability system. If the, the school district's not there yet with the development of their own assessments, then the state would offer assessments in those two content areas that the schools could utilize. And then they could then score those and include those in that local accountability system. So these three pieces here are required. Vibrant learning experiences, writing and social are required to be in the local accountability system. But there's just options for this. And then I'll turn it over to Sarah for, uh, one, at least one option of vibrant learning.
So we, I think at the request of this group here, uh, wanted to talk about student capstone projects. But one thing that Jennifer, uh, led a subcommittee actually within the United North Council, uh, that was focused on exploring, um, what, what exists right now in Kentucky, but also what exists nationally and internationally. Right? Because we know that we not only want to be competitive here at home, but also wherever life may take our students. So, um, there were some commonalities across our context and quite frankly, the nation and this rise of durable skills. So when we talk about a portfolio of learn, uh, in those skills like communication, collaboration and, and, uh, being a critical thinker, um, those are obviously hard to measure on a traditional assessment. Right? You're not going to get a student's performance of how well they can collaborate with a peer um, on the current standardized social studies test. So that prompted a conversation around, well then how can we do that? Um, luckily our districts are amazing and, and they're far ahead of us on exploring that. And so it shows up in a few ways. Capstone projects are one of those ways. Um, and, and that kind of falls in line with our, uh, student defenses of learning. So where students are formally defending a portfolio of evidence in front of a panel. Uh, that happens probably the most often in our districts already. Um, and then we also, Jennifer, I'm making a little bit more here for the other ones, because my brain is, is, uh, tapped out. We have capstone, student-led conferences, student-led conferences, defenses. What, um, what's exploring and they have the ability to develop their own. It's some personalized pathways. Um, and so student capstones are one of those. Um, before I dive in deeply to that, Jennifer, if you don't mind me speaking to this, I think we played quite a role in it. Um, wanting to talk about what this support looks like for districts who aren't there yet, um, who maybe don't have defenses of learning or don't have those, uh, performance-based assessment systems, as Jennifer mentioned. Um, so we're, we know this doesn't happen overnight, right? It would be completely unfair of the, the department to come to any district and, and say, flip a switch, right? We don't want to do that for our districts and we, we care deeply about getting this right. And so thinking first about starting with a pilot phase. So Jennifer mentioned to you that we've been working with local laboratories of learning. Those were eighteen districts who opted in over three cohorts to be part of that work. Very organically, we've actually brought on a whole lot more districts informally in the last year. So districts who say, we, we really want to do this work, our community is actually demanding it of us. Um, and so while we weren't a part of the original group, we're ready, we want to step into that space. So piloting, uh, into the next year where we learned more from districts. We've learned so much already and we want to continue to pressure test some of our room break, some of our thinking against the people who are actually doing the work in the field. Then expanding that over the following year, uh, to bring in essentially become the next wave of, of piloting districts who will write on the test of readiness to start, um, sharing with them not only the professional learning, but those, uh, circles of district peer support, uh, networks. We imagine that being done very regionally. Um, so right now a statewide sampling of districts who are ready is still relatively small. But by that expansion phase, really thinking about a regional support approach and leaning into the expertise that also comes from our co-ops. And then finally, a sustainability phase, obviously where we are kind of fully operational in local accountability, where we would, um, and I certainly hope to see that every district has some sort of public reporting mechanism uh, to their local accountability system. And so that happens over much like three years and looking ahead into implementation after crossing a legislative finish line. Uh, but the work is ongoing right now. We are working on that pilot phase, um, preparing for that as we go into districts in the fall. And so we, we want to kind of be ahead of the game, uh, always in learning from our communities and our districts to help shape our next steps. This is not some from my team, uh, or, or Jennifer's team by any means. It's really been, uh, the leadership of what our districts are doing as well. I've spoken to that well through Jennifer. Do you have anything else you would add? Uh, so one of, one of the pieces that we've mentioned in here is helping districts prepare in creating the types of experiences that are needed in the system. So if we're going to, um, hold ourselves accountable through an indicator of vibrant learning, then we need to have ways to measure those more abstract concepts and skills. So capstone projects are one way to do that. And so if you think about the accountability system, uh, proposal, um, then think of that as an indicator, perhaps. Um, Nelson County may say, okay, we want to start off by providing capstone projects, um, to, in milestone years that they've twelve. Um, and we are going to report publicly to our community on the number of students who are successfully defended, right? Um, and then over time that might transition less into the number of students with access. Because we ultimately want that number to be a hundred. Um, into measuring instead the quality of those experiences, right? Um, and so thinking about that shift over time may be a realistic way to, to transition. Um, but a capstone project could be one of the vibrant learning indicators that a district chose. They don't have to do that. Not every district needs to offer capstone experiences, but it is an option that we hear you all might be interested in. And so by definition, we're really looking at more student-driven experiences. This is not a one-size-fits-all test, uh, or, or task that would be handed to a student. It's typically going to happen in their senior year, but we do see these more transition years, as I mentioned, that they can follow. And students take ownership of an area they're interested in. If I know down the road I want to be a marine biologist, I've got to get my research, my capstone project is going to be driven by that passion. Um, it maybe, it's something as simple as I can't stand to see the trash on the side of the street in my community and I'm going to be the one that needs to do something about it. Um, so scale, it really varies here, but the important thing is students have ownership of what that is. It addresses real world problems and they contribute to the research, the planning, the execution and the iteration and presentation of that significant. Um, it's really meant to, like I mentioned, not only encapsulate a, a, um, culmination of their academic studies. You should see evidence of social studies knowledge of math and reading and writing in this experience. But it's also addressing those skills that are just harder to capture on a more traditional assessment. Uh, so you can imagine here how much more opportunity students would have in presenting how they executed a community plan for, uh, an urban recycling, uh, system. How much more collaborative, uh, that would, that would have given that opportunity to that student to not only practice, but then demonstrate and defend their ability to be collaborative with leaders in their community. Um, I added this here, this is a quote from a ruler, they're, they're a, a vendor, a partner that we've worked with in the past, but I like this, um, comparison. They said, if, if in athletics, these are, there are competitive matches and if performing arts or stage performances, then think of school as a series of practices, then capstone, these are that big, big game. So their daily school experiences would help put them to successfully execute a capstone. Uh, these are, uh, some characteristics, some research-based characteristics of effective capstone experiences. I think that's important and something that we are talking about as a department. When we are talking about the flexibilities that exist here, we have to think equitably to ensure there are guardrails and parameters, make sure that these experiences are high quality. And so these are some considerations that would make this not just another project, a poster board that students share, but instead a really meaningfully high qual, meaningful, high-quality experience. Uh, and did find this really interesting in some research that we had done. Uh, the Association of American Colleges and Universities actually recognizes capstone as one of only eleven high-impact practices for retention and engagement. So we just wanted to mention, uh, that that is some of the research out there on, um, we'll talk about student truancy and attendance issues of engagement. Certainly looking at a research-based way to get the students back and involved in their education. As I kind of talked about here, why they matter, um, seeing it not only from just perception, but also the research shows that these experiences do boost student engagement. Um, uh, we were all seniors once, that senioritis is a very real word. I didn't even want to put that in quotes because it's just a real thing. Uh, so if you're thinking about as a senior, you've got that meaningful experience tied to something you're deeply driven around and it's going to meaningfully impact your community or the world at large. Um, really great opportunity just to keep them hanging on, keep them in there in a meaningfully academically relevant way. Um, develops those durable skills that we've mentioned, it's going to help them whether they're going into college or career. It also provides that opportunity for them to take ownership of their learning and it's a powerful demonstration for college and career. Um, talking about those defenses of learning, one of my favorite stories out of districts, um, I believe in Shelby County, uh, defenses along their career pathways. Students had, um, defended to the local, um, University of local hospital staff and walked out with, uh, bills or dollars from their defense, uh, because they had such robust evidence. Um, and, and just kind of a comparison, we, we've also heard from business owners who said, many of you all did this with your students, it changed the way I, when they come to me. Um, that was a local factory and manufacturing owner. That was a local factory and manufacturing owner. So only knew to ask about their collaboration skills and knew they had evidence of it. I could have been doing this. So really meaningful change there in college or career. Wanted to provide you just with some examples of ways they might present these capstones. So here you've seen a picture, this is quite dated now, actually about three years, where Elizabeth Town High School, their engineering students presented a capstone. Even there, you can see they're collaborating on this experience. So it's not just done in isolation by an individual student. So these students collaborated to research and plan around pressure plates and roads. And they actually presented to relevant community leaders. So this might be peers. Sometimes this is peers and often it is career and community experts in that field. As I mentioned, the University of Mobile Medical Staff on in the healthcare pathway. This might show up as a prototype or a service or an industry. You might see plans to go to local business, I'm sorry, local leadership and policymakers. You might see this in the form of a local community initiative that's been executed. Multimedia presentations and a portfolio with a defense. Technology's not been my friend, but I would love to pull up, I have a link here. But if you have a device, a phone on your camera, you should be able to zoom in and scan. Both of these will have access after this meeting as well. And I'm going to try to pull up an example here for you if technology's on our side. But these two rubric examples, Shelby County has shared with us their defensive learning dashboard. This is kind of an all-inclusive, one-stop shop for a sampling of their rubrics. Last I saw, they had shared rubrics both in English and Spanish, I believe. It also had rubrics for across grade levels and for different purposes. So we will try to pull those up. I'll work on that as hard as I can. And then Allen County for context to share with us a single point rubric. And so a single point rubric looks a little bit different. If you're used to thinking about a rubric that gives you a score of zero, one, two, three or four based on some criteria of the task. A single point rubric is more mastery-based. It's competency-based in that you either demonstrate this or you don't. Right? So it's kind of an all or nothing so that we can ensure students get accurate feedback and there's a high bar of standard to meet. And so a single point rubric is used there as. But I'm going to try my best, but I'm going to give you all time. Is there anyone who can access it? Again, you want to have.
No, but this is funny. I'm from Shelby County. I mean, I've lived in Shelby County forty-two years, but I'm from Allen County.
You were on my mind.
But I went to Scottsville High, not Allen County, Scottsville High.
Well, I'm sure Travis Hamby will let it slide, superintendent down there. Let's see, I'm going to stop sharing Brenda, but you'll be right back up. I was brave to even think of putting a video in here, so I should have really thought about a link. So I'm going to do, I'm going to do this little squat here, so I apologize. But wanted to show you, I'll actually show you two things while we're on Shelby County. This is their defensive learning dashboard. What I really appreciate about this example is this is live and public. We talked about sharing and opening up those resources. They're not holding this to themselves. Everything they've done as a local laboratory of learning is public and other districts can use it. So this is their portrait of a learner. They call it a profile of a graduate. And they've talked about ways they've engaged to come up with the things, the competencies that matter to them. If you scroll down, this is actually where you start to see their rubrics. And so they have published for you both teacher rubrics and the student-facing rubrics so that you can see across their different grade levels. They also have a requirement that seniors will have a resume that accompanies this. Now in Shelby County, I do think it's important as board members to think this is in graduation policy. In Shelby County and Fleming County, there are others, I think, on their way to passing similar policy locally. But this is a graduation requirement in this particular community that students must successfully defend at the senior level. I will just click on this real quick so you can kind of see how this might differ from your typical rubric. Certainly not backing away from expectations. A lot of our districts will say this is much harder on students. There's a lot more at stake here for them, but you can see even language is starting to change. We're not just giving them a number anymore, but we are starting to move their mindset towards mastery. And so are you beginning to master these concepts? Developing, approaching or demonstrating true mastery of whether it's academic content or skills like communication. So they've broken down domains, mastery of your competency, so those durable skills, knowledge and skills are demonstrated. Application, which I think is a real distinction. It's not about memorizing a fact or regurgitating it. It's can you apply that knowledge in a non-way that it's meaningfully relevant? Reflective practices. I will cry in every single capstone defense or defensive learning of a portfolio because I cannot believe how reflective students are when given the chance to be. The metacognition, the understanding, the thinking about how they think and the thinking of who they are as learners is so deep because of some of these opportunities. They will adult far better than I do, I promise you because of that experience. So they're always reflecting on growth, which again, it's just not something that we capture right now in our assessment system. And so to hear students to require that there's this element of reflection and growth over time. And then they break it down into the specific skills you see there like communications. This is their secondary rubric. Doesn't matter if you're a freshman or a senior. This is more guide along the way. So they have plenty of opportunities from their ninth grade year up to that senior year to practice. Any questions so far about that, those expectations, for example, from this one? Again, the Allen County will be similar, but instead of these four scales, they have a single scale and that is mastering. So students don't get this range. They either measure you at mastery or give you feedback for going to get there. So that's the same one point rubric and the difference there for them. Questions or thoughts?
Students are seeing that rubric? Yes, it gives them a guide, it gives them, it helps them understand where I need to be each spot, you know, each period of growth. Where am I engaging? Like where are eyes on my, where am I right now? Yeah.
She's from, she's from, she has a passion, a passion project. English class, she took learning classes. So she doesn't see language really as well as my process. Because he started it. So it's just part of how he learns instead of it sort of coming in. And as a, as a caregiver, I started class giving to caregivers. I see that because I could have came in on the end of all of that stuff and that's where my talker is. Son, this is the foundation of how the universe, he can talk to you about this. And how.
Depending on district and how long they've been in that work. Yeah, some students are like, what are you there? This is just how you do school. And so that's really interesting to watch the kids come up because a lot of districts are shifting to have been eight, twelve times that system. Not everyone's there yet. So imagine like this takes a lot of capacity building and it does not happen overnight, but Shelby County, Allen County, and so many others are putting this one out there to districts to match, which is huge. And if you think about the color system and the type of competitiveness that exists and publishing scores and newspaper and pitting districts against each other off of the football field, right, and off the baseball field. This opens up a whole other world of saying, I'm not playing against you. We are growing to tell these students together. So let us share our resources you share. What I love about this now is our districts are really taking others to these districts to sit on the panels of these students. And they're actually, they say, we just need to see it. Can we have a rubric? Can we be supporting these students? And that's really helpful. Board members, I encourage you, please, when you're about to leave or your district, find out if they do these, go sit on a panel. One, they need you to. They need lots of bodies to sit on these panels for every student. But you will walk away just over. And just if you need a pick-me-up, go sit on a defense field. It's just amazing. I said on one where a student, he was not your traditionally successful student, but he had the whole room in tears because he talked about how he'd become a lifelong learner. And at first, the, you know, the person in charge that let me know, they said, you know, they kind of had to let me down gently. They were like, you know, we're going to see, no, he does. He's not a traditional high performer and he doesn't have a lot of evidence for some of these skills. And he got up there and he could talk to me and said, it was the first time I've ever talked to an audience like this and gotten up. I normally would have been sent to the office, but he said, I'm a lifelong learner to the extent where his class, it was a PTE requirement to swim at the local swimming pool and take course and successfully do some things there. And he said, ten years passed and I flat out refused. I went to the office, spent some time in suspension or whatever needed to happen for his behavior there. And he said, but I did it. And he said, I got over the fact that one of his parents had actually left to their family when he was a child. And so it was more of a traumatic experience for him. But he was able to reflect on his growth to the fact that he said, it took me three years, but he said, I overcame and I learned something I'd never allowed myself to learn, which was when into the senior year because he had the support and opportunity to do that. So not a traditional way you would think of a lifelong learner. He had some other academic evidence as well. But I thought it was so powerful for him to even have the opportunity and quite honestly, the courage to share that with other strangers. So I just really empowering for these students and I think a place to let them celebrate success in whatever way that feels like, along with, again, those rigorous academic standards.
So that's, those are an example. I will leave you with one thing because Jennifer mentioned it. And while I'm here on Shelby County's website, again, we'll make sure that you have all of these. You can also scroll down. I just love the transparency. You can scroll down and actually see defense video examples. They video every child, special education, multilingual learner, regular education student. You'll see examples from every single school right here. So if you can't make it to a panel, I encourage you to go check that out. But one other thing I'll just show you is if you go to Shelby County and they're not the only one who does this, but they just happen to be here for us on the screen. Jennifer mentioned earlier that public reporting of local measures. And so you all are familiar with legislatively, the reporting here that happens at the top before you're reading a math course. But I want you to notice what they've also linked here is their community dashboard. And so imagine this in our, in our future here with what Jennifer shared. This would be the means by which your district reports those local measures. So if you said that the number of students, let's see, I'm trying to think of a strong example here. Oh, so having high-quality trained professional staff was one thing their community said they want to be monitoring and reported on. And so they have an indicator for that reported. What's interesting about this particular community is they got feedback from their community that they guess data and numbers are one thing, but stories tell us a lot more. And so they asked for an narrative-style dashboard, which is not something we often think about. But this is an example. So they, employees are highly qualified professionals is their indicator of success. That's something their community wants. It's not traditionally reported. And they have stories and evidence like their students have to have. They have evidence that that is indeed the case or they let you know where they need to make some growth. And if you are interested in those more traditional measures, you can actually, I'm sorry, not traditional measures, but a traditional data dashboard. Right here at the bottom, they have developed a complement to that last page where you can go in and see that data. And so defenses of learning, since we're on the subject there, you can see the number of students who do not meet expectations, meets expectations or exceeds expectations by school level. So again, that was something their community cared about. It's not on their school report. It's not in the state system, but they are very transparently reporting that based on what the community wanted. And as I mentioned, through local policymaking, again, something that is part of their graduation requirements.
Our community is really involved. They've just wrapped their arms around the industries. We've got ninety-two new schools. And they come and they do the defenses and it's just, it's just a partnership.
Would you say it's been stronger since this, the local accountability work?
It is. And if I, if I could add, that's one of the benefits for developing that number as it invites community members, partners, faith leaders, community members, business leaders into the schools. And when you get that, um, supporting that your students are more productive, their schools feel more supportive and your community then benefits from all of this.
We have another thing in Shelby County that's with the chamber that they just started this year with the community. They come in and take about four seniors each and they meet with them, I think, two or three times during the year. I didn't get to do it this year. But they come in like four times and kind of mentor. Are you having any questions? You know, what, what's your, this was senior. And I think next year they're doing a junior and senior. What is your goals for next year? How can we help you with your goal? Where are you going to school? What are you going to do next year? And that has been really successful and it's with Shelby County and the chamber.
And we've heard a lot of stories like that about more resources, plans, with role businesses and ensuring just have a new awareness of what the district aims to do, quite friendly how it's been. Just before I pass it off here to Dr. Corrigan to talk about somebody's legislative policy that you all kind of asked about, just want to encourage you as board members. You can't overstate the importance of your role in this work. The most successful local labs of learning that we've seen had board members helping to help the facility lead those community sessions. Even if they're not necessarily leaders in that space, at least attending those sessions and being a part of. Dr. Fletcher actually was a former superintendent, one of our L3s. And he said, we intentionally went out and interviewed families who had left our district to either homeschool or go to another district. And he said, I agree, because he said, my board members and myself were suddenly equipped with their one-on-one stories and we could do something about it. And so it was just a really good opportunity for them. So I encourage you as board members to find out and I'm happy to let you know if your district is either already engaged in this work or to think about ways to perhaps talk about local accountability. Because whether it comes down to graduation policies, we actually had a student, former second board member as a student who said, it needs to be in policy, it needs to be in accountability. And people's tune to take it seriously. So he was actually an advocate, seeing it submitted in policy. Our Jeffers, I'm sorry, not Jefferson County, Shelby County went through a leadership transition and they credit a lot of those local policies are placed to safeguard this is the reason it's been sustained. As a matter of fact, board and leaders have not been on the same page about putting policy in place to protect this. It goes, comes and goes with the kinds of leadership. And so just want to think about that as, as you're looking at board leadership roles, how to safeguard this. So this is something that's important to you. Obviously think about your role and we are happy to connect you with other districts who have had those conversations.
So I know this is really powerful, but, um, how did, maybe, Joe, you know, I was just moving here, but how did, how did first get to get this? Meeting to invite people to come, or is it? How did, how did, how do you get so many people to begin to say what they?
You need to be visible, visible. Yeah, as board members, you need to be out in the community, meeting people and talking about it yourself.
Yeah, I mean.
I think ours started with project graduation, where we had town meetings and discussed it. Each board member took a certain area and we did town meetings to discuss, uh, project. And that was, that's been several years ago. I think that was probably about six, seven or eight years to Dr. Myhaw. When we started from.
And so shameless one, for the next year, I have a staff member assigned each region who can help facilitate that community meeting. Um, so typically it looks like an invitation that goes out broadly. We're happy to help with those, we're showing the examples. Um, and then it's usually done over three sessions. So, uh, we've had districts, Electric County really put on the ritz. They hosted a dinner, got a community space. They had about a hundred folks come in. They thought no one would come. They were like amazed because a hundred folks from their community showed up. Um, and stayed around to see that through. They developed a portrait learner in the state's first from it. Um, but that is also something we are well equipped to cope with. If it's of interest to the district, we, we are happy to help with that. But it does typically look like an open invitation through local radio, Facebook, social media is the best, right? Um, but also to get folks to come to, usually three meetings, like I said, to talk about what do we define as local success for our district. And then it evolves over about the course of a year into some metrics and.
Yes, um. We're trying to increase engagement. So we hope that we need to manage those things that help them. We went to careers of college. How will we know that this is the best way?
So in terms of measuring that, uh, and, and reporting out on it, I think this, some of our local accountability systems are reporting on that right now, right? They're tracking more often than what our state can currently do. So in most cases, our districts are tracking and reporting this on a quarterly basis. And they're tracking it along with change. And so if you were to go to Fleming County, for example, their dashboard will actually show you where they started at the beginning of the year and tracking progress on their indicators in each quarter. So that's some very real time results that we're seeing. Um, and that varies with academic data and, uh, with those more non-traditional indicators that we've talked about. Um, and so, but we're also thinking about through that pilot, that's, that's also part of compiling data. And we heard from, uh, the council, they want, uh, disaggregated data around students um, who are more likely to go unseen in, uh, in any of our systems, right? So we don't want a student to fall due cracks and, and sasperiate inequities in our systems. That should be the opposite of what this does. So that's something that we want to keep a close eye on and ask about pilot districts. Is how can you start to disaggregate data and show this is working truly for every student?
And, uh, and if I could add, um, so there is, um, again, where I started, we're taking systems and we're encouraging the experiences for students in the classroom. And so we've talked about the vibrant learning experiences. And we've got data, decades of data that demonstrate that deeper learning and those experiences that this, that really engage students. Benefit the student academically. So if it's rigorous, if it's connected to the Kentucky academic standards, then what we're seeing, um, through, through research is that, um, students achieve more. They perform better and they graduate at higher levels. And so, so we're taking these systems and encouraging those vibrant learning experiences.
Are we doing anything with first secondary? Experience. We hear from first secondary educators, lots of times that they are coming to us and they can't read and they're having to do all of this immediately. Is there a way for us to be able to tune in to what they're actually seeing? Do those kids, uh, rise up to that level and do what we do second?
Yeah, Sarah, Sarah, we are working, our team has been vibrating through the council with the secondary education, creating preschools of twenty continuum of skill development. Um, they, the public universities in Kentucky is actually going, they have a portrait learner now. Um, that is actually standardized across all the universities. And so they're being asked, those, those professors and instructors are asked to create assessments now that give students, um, the ability to demonstrate mastery of skills at the collegiate level. And so, um, that's something now that we're aligned to them with, uh, which is really exciting. Um, and then I think, you know, in those community meetings that we're talking about, very, very important to have someone, and we help do community mapping to see who needs to be at the end of your table. Um, but having those people on your committee is a really great way because then you get access to interview them. You know, bring them into those conversations. Um, but we are seeing a shift even through the legislative, um, uh, the legislation around our literacy and mathematics, um, investments. And so I, I'm very excited for the future of that. It's going to start with our littlest, uh, folks right now, but I'm seeing it even in my son's that literacy rates are well on the rise. And so those future graduates are in a much better position, I think, you know, those. That's another team at the department that's not represented in here tonight, but if that's interesting, we can always talk to those. In the spaces. It's exciting work. I'm very excited. Um, I'm gonna ask Dr. Corby to come up. Um, I think we've taken away from his time a little bit, so do apologize. Um, but want to talk about House 181. Want to start?
Good evening. Uh, I'm Matthew Corby. I'm a policy advisor at K D E. I think Sarah, this was supposed to be Senate bill 181. Uh, about traceable communications.
Yes, it might be, yes.
I just want to clarify that. Um, we don't have a formal presentation here today, uh, because this is still very much an evolving policy area. Um, so I thought I could just do a very quick rundown of what this bill does and then open the floor for questions and discussion. I'm sure you've got some thoughts on it. Um, so Senate 181, like this is like, is this working? Can you hear me without this? If it's like buzzing behind you, so I'm just gonna cut that out. Um, so Senate 181 is what we call a traceable communications bill. What this bill is going to require is for all of your boards to adopt a policy and a traceable communications platform for electronic communication between staff, volunteers and our students. The purpose of this is to make sure that we have evidence of what kinds of conversations are going on uh, between staff, volunteers and students and to be able to have an archive of that. Um, so it prohibits educators and volunteers from communicating with students directly through social media, like Facebook Messenger, through text messages or other direct messaging apps, uh, Instagram, Snapchat, those sorts of things. So you'll, you'll have to adopt a standardized platform, and then everyone will have to use that when they communicate to, uh, any students, uh, anywhere in the state, in your district or outside of the district. Uh, the exception is for family members. So if you are a family member of a student and you are a staff or volunteer, you can still communicate with that student. Notable exception, cousins. Um, cousins are not considered family members under Senate 181. So only uh, nieces and nephews, grandchildren, personal children, stepchildren, um. I think cousins is probably going to get a bunch of people in trouble because that seems counterintuitive, especially Kentucky. We've got big networked families. Um, so that's something I just feel like I should tell every audience, cousins don't count, uh, in this bill. Um, also, parents have the ability to waive, uh, that requirement. So if they want you to be able to text message with a student, they can do that. Your schools will have to create a form, um, but parents don't have to use that form. They can write their own letter, have their own forms. And then your schools have to accept that. The forms have to be on file with the principal before you can start communicating with the student outside of that. Approved communication platform. Uh, one more thing I'll say about sort of your role. So this doesn't apply to you. You can still communicate with students. You're neither a volunteer nor an employee of the school district. Um, so you're still able to talk to your kids and your cousins and all of that, um, however you want. The one caveat to that, uh, is if you are in some kind of group communication with the superintendent, which probably most of you are, some kind of group chat or something like that, and you have a student on your board, then that group chat will have to move to the new platform, uh, because the superintendent cannot communicate directly with that student electronically. You still can, but superintendent can't. So it'll all have to move over. Those group chats will have to move. Um, that was a very quick kind of overview of what this bill does. We are anticipating, um, some scenario-based guidance to come out from the department next week. We've got lots of questions about what if this and what if that. So we've been collecting those. That will probably come out, um, I think Tuesday or Wednesday is what we're looking at. Um, I saw a draft of it today. Uh, and it's going to communications to get all the formatting and, you know, grammar checks and all of that, that it has to get before it goes out. Um, so that'll be coming soon. Um, so in fact, I thought I would just open the floor and see, are there specific questions, thoughts about this bill? What can I help to answer? Yeah. So as a school board member, this doesn't apply to you. Does not apply to school board members unless you're a teacher. So there are some school board members, so like the Chair of Fayette County School Board is also a teacher in another district, um, Anderson County, because that's one, right? Um, so because he's a teacher in that district, he cannot communicate with, with students in Fayette County. But if you are a school board member, you're not affiliated with a school district, then you can continue to communicate with young people, however you have been.
So what is, what if as a school board member, I am?
Yeah. So that's a really good question.
Is it like to push your child or anything?
Yes. Yeah, um, without speaking out of turn, I think I can say the department was not super happy with this bill. The language is very, um, I'm just gonna say sloppy. It's very sloppy. There's a lot of consequences. So here's what I would say, um. If you're a school board member and you're also volunteering in, in the district that you are a school board, then I think you are still a school board member, okay? If you are volunteering in another district, maybe you have a grandchild who's in the, so like I, I live in Corvance. So there's three districts, actually four districts, kind of within a ten mile radius, right? So I could be a school member here, but my niece could go to school in another district. So if I'm a school board member over here, I'm probably okay. If I'm volunteering in my niece's district and it's not where I'm a school member, then I'm a volunteer. And now I have to use that communication platform. My advice, when in doubt, use the communication platform. Your school will have one anyway. Uh, it will, you all will probably discuss that at a board meeting because you'll have to adopt a policy. So, um, if there's ever any question, you're thinking, should I message the student? Just use the platform. Yeah, so K D E is gonna, in that guidance document, there's gonna be some options. I don't want it's kind of rattling off right now because they haven't all been approved. And I don't know for sure what the final list will be, uh, but we will be providing some options next week. Yeah, most of them are gonna cost.
They will be like apps.
Yeah, so they'll probably be apps. They'll probably also will be a desktop interface. Um, I know that some of the teacher associations are encouraging teachers not to download the apps, to only use the desktop interface. Um, because then, let's say that there was an allegation, then they're gonna take your phone, right? And then they have access to everything on your phone. So there's some, um, security concerns, I think, for the adults in that, in that conversation that haven't been considered. Uh, but there should be both an app and a, a desktop interface. Some kind of push notification. So one that you might be familiar with, Remind 101. It's a system that a lot of schools use where they can go in and they can program in, you know, don't forget the field trip permission slip is due tomorrow. And then that pushes out to all the students. So tools like that, um, might be one that, that you could use. Um, I don't know that, like, your current Remind 101 subscriptions are probably not sufficient to meet all of this. But like, if you upgrade to the super premium version, uh, you'll probably be able to do that.
Glad that you spelled out that here can give permission for that, that next day, the interaction, because there are so many situations where, just like, um, so we have students reporters who work out and when they're out working, they have a question, they need to quickly get an answer from their, their teacher.
Yeah.
Say, in, in those kind of situations.
Yeah, I think so. I think also about overnight student field trips. You know, a lot of schools will fill a bus full of seniors and they go to New York, they go to DC, you know, have senior trips. Um, and I put myself in my teacher, my old teacher shoes, and I think, oh my gosh, how am I gonna talk to that kid? What, how am I gonna get a hold of that kid when, you know, we're outside of the Met Opera House and they haven't got on the bus and it's nine o'clock at night? I don't know where they are. And this is a, you know, a hundred thousand square foot facility and, you know, so there are some consequences to that. Um, also, we think about, you mentioned youth groups. We have a lot of uh, teachers who are also engaged in youth group and Sunday school activities. They, those are transferable skills into those spaces, right? And so a lot of teachers find themselves there. They're going to need to have those, um, permission slips in place if they want to communicate with those families that way. The key to the permission slip, though, is it has to be on file with the school. So, um, I just talked to a representative from a local, um, community theater. And they had, just sort of as their normal thing, they've always had people sign forms saying, we can text your phone about the community theater. And they said, well, this is protect us. And I said, well, the form does, but you've got to make a copy of them. You've got to give them to the school. Um, can't, you know, just having the form by yourself doesn't count. Babysitters, same thing. Uh, if you are a teacher and you have a, you know, high school senior who's coming to watch your kids, you probably need to have that form on file with the school for that, for that kid. Yeah. Yeah, this is going to be very burdensome.
And so that's mine.
It will have some consequences.
And we thought of consequence. Because our, I mean, before. And who's gonna say that my boss says, when you're from today and, oh, I'm sorry, you could talk to.
Yeah.
Or, um, like, permission for two weeks because it was this trip or, you know, who, who's gonna do that?
Well, and beyond that, another one, um, the law says that a parent can withdraw or give. And so if you have parents who are not in communication with each other, then that could also be a conflict. So there is some guidance about, uh, re- reporting and consequences. Um, it will start at the school level. So the principal will do an investigation, collect data. Ultimately, it's probably gonna end up at the licensure board. That's where that's gonna trickle up. You know, and it, it's one of those things as a professional, you know, you kind of have to think about who's gonna be mad and tell on me. Right? Like, that's part of. Like that's part of it. So a friend of mine said, well, what, you know, I take my friends' kids with us to the beach every summer. Do I need to get her to sign a form? And I said, personally, I would, because losing your license, you lose everything, right? You lose your whole life, everything that you've worked for. And I said, she said, well, but she's my best friend all the way back to high school. And I said, well, that's great, but what if, you know, something wild happens and you have an affair with her husband? And now she's like, I'm gonna get you. And, you know, those are things, no one plans for those things to happen, but they happen, right? You see it all the time. And so thinking about those long-term consequences, they might be your best friend today, tomorrow, they might really wanna tattle on you and you've walked right into it. So I'm telling all of my educator friends, all my teacher superintendent principal friends, be as careful as possible. This is one that I anticipate will be opened back up. I don't know if it'll happen this January or the next, but it's causing so much heartburn out in the world that I think they're gonna have to do some adjusting to it. That doesn't help us now, but it's something to watch for.
It's been a trend.
Yeah, I mean, I think for a lot of teachers, it really does feel like that. It's very.
You know, it doesn't directly affect. But teachers and administrators. And it's just like this. And because lots of times they all had relationships with a lot of students. And now they've got a limit. Now, we're talking this with today, you know, and that's just crazy. Like you said, you've got all these churches together, they've been together for, kids been from the time they were born at my house. And, you know, that's just crazy.
Yeah. And I think, you know, the, the bill's intention was to, I think, limit inappropriate relationships, right? And they talked a lot about grooming and, and, and those sorts of things. And I think there's some legitimate concern to that. But I think it, it's maybe a little overcorrection. Because now we're gonna have a situation where it gets very hard to form any kind of relationship with a child. We know that there are children who the teachers are the only adults in their life who they have a relationship with for lots of various reasons. You know, I think about our foster care youth, where those teachers might be the only stable adults. Because they're moving from home to home. And now that stable adult who, you know, they might have called at night and said, I'm being moved again and I just need somebody to hear me cry on the phone. That can't happen anymore. So I, you know, there are gonna be a lot of unintended consequences. That's why I say I think it will get opened back up. Because it's really causing a lot of stress out in the field. Yeah, so no phone calls. Some apps will do that, where you can call and it'll make a recording and a transcript. They are very expensive. So I would be surprised if a lot of districts adopted that. It's really, I think, going to look like one-way communication from me to the student saying, don't forget the, your permission slip. Don't forget your project is due next week. I think that's what it's gonna be. I don't think there's gonna be a lot of two-way communication. I think teachers are gonna be afraid to have two-way communication. I think the apps that allow for two-way communication are more expensive than the apps that allow for one-way communication. So I think we're just gonna see a big drop off in that.
Do we hope to see?
Yeah. I mean, I think that's the goal. The, the, the problem with that is that there just really aren't that many, right? I mean.
They find out.
Yeah, exactly. If you're, if you're already breaking the law, right, exactly. You know, there, some of the stems, there was a Herald Leader investigative report a year, maybe, maybe two years ago. That looked at standards boards complaints related to this. And it sounded like a huge number, but it was really like 0.25 of a percent of the total teaching workforce. But of course, that's not what they wrote. They wrote the huge number, right? And so people got their heckles up about that. But, I mean, when you think about it, 0.25%, you're probably gonna have 0.25% of people having inappropriate relationships at churches and at doctor's offices. I mean, that's just society, right? So I think that that instigated some of this and, you know, got some legislators concerned about it. They have maybe overcorrected it.
How will we, how will they know if this is not?
So advocacy. I mean, this is one where US board members are gonna have to call your legislators who represent your district and say, this is costing us like $16,000 more. Is that what you said? $12,000 more than what we were paying? Where's that money coming from? And you're gonna have to have those conversations if you don't like this. I don't think they're gonna see it in EPSB numbers, because I just, the numbers are so low already, I don't. And like you said, the people who are gonna do it are gonna do it. I think there probably will be a rise in complaints to EPSB, because now there's ways to do that. It's a little, there's, like you said, some people are interpreting it kind of as a trap. So I do think there will be a rise in complaints, but I think those complaints will almost all be dismissed as simple misunderstandings and. So I think it's advocacy. And I know that teacher groups are already organizing around it and advocating for changes to it. Because they're very concerned about the lack of relationships. I know there's some groups who do work related to social emotional learning and making sure our children have access to mental health resources. They are advocating already for changes to this. Because of, like I said, with that, you know, single safe adult, you know, that might be the teacher in a lot of instances. So it is one, we're just kind of gonna have to wait and see how it settles out. We do have one more, KRS 158150, section two. This one deals with the requirement to expel students if they, for 12 months, if they bring a weapon or make a justifiable threat against the building or the staff member. I'm not sure if there was a specific question about this one. It does, there's a lot of room for interpretation in this. Yeah. So what I'll say about that is that KDE advocated against this change. We also do not think that this is the right thing for kids. Because there's not enough, there needs to be some local authority to weigh in on those decisions. So US school board members are able to look at this kid, look at this situation. There is some language in those statute about credible threats and evidence of a credible threat. The problem that a lot of districts run into is that they have policies that we call zero tolerance policies. If you've got a zero tolerance policy, then credibility of a threat really goes out the window. So I'll give you an example. When I was a teacher, I taught elementary in a rural area. And I remember a situation where a first grader had bought one of those little tiny pocket knives. You know, the kind that you give a first grader when they're like scouts doing their little like, making a sharp stick over the campfire, right? Just, it was like that big. And that kid got expelled. And that was before this law. So that kid wasn't expelled for 12 months. But we expelled a first grader for accidentally bringing a little tiny pocket knife. Like that was probably not an appropriate response to the situation. Given the culture of the community and the background of that child and the family, you know, we, we knew it was going. And he wasn't threatening, it just was in his backpack and someone saw him. But because there was a zero tolerance policy in place, that's what they had to do, because they had already decided this is what we're always going to do. And so, I mean, I would encourage you as board members to think critically about zero tolerance policies. If you have those, of what those look like. This is an example of a zero tolerance policy in the law. And so we don't have any control over it. It has to be 12 months, whether we like it or not. I wish that we had the legislative sway to get that to move, but we just don't right now. So that's another opportunity for US board members to engage with your local legislators. I'll also say when this change happened, it came from board members who wanted to be able to extend the length of some expulsions. We didn't have the authority to do so. So a group of board members lobbied for this change. So a group of board members could lobby to change it. Really in response to one particular student, one particular instance, that just really had a community that been on it.
Federal. I, I thought he was in federal. Handguns. But then we have the exceptions, the special needs kids. And they said, federal protection. And so that's why they aren't helping. Others are helping. They're not. They give a reasonable period of time out. And so it's, I'm glad that law sounds pretty tough. I don't think it's hold up when it comes to the challenge.
Yeah. So the 12 months is what's in state law. And you're correct that the IDA does override state law in these instances. It's one of those things that somebody has to sue and it has to be adjudicated, right? And so I think most board attorneys are rightfully very conservative in how they interpret things. And so they've probably told you, let's just not get sued over the IDA. Because being sued over IDA especially is a years-long digging the ditch. I mean, it just keeps going and going and going. Because once you open one IDA investigation, it's just dominoes, right? Because it's such a, it's a law that is taken so seriously, as it should be. So most board attorneys are probably telling you, let's just not go over there. Let's make this rational. So that's probably why you've heard that. But yeah, I mean, it, it, a 12-year or 12-month requirement isn't state law. Like I said, board members would need to join their voices together to advocate for that change. We, I think, would be right behind you. We've had leadership changes, of course, since this was done. So I can't speak for Dr. Fletcher. I've not talked to him about this issue. But I, as a policy advisor, would advise him that we should be on board with that. Creating some local flexibility and options. Because it's, you're right, it's causing a lot of challenges. And see, that's a, that's a space too, where we have to talk about, is that a credible threat? And probably, again, board attorneys are very conservative, so in that instance, your board attorney, or maybe a zero tolerance policy can be a play. But a conservative board attorney would probably say, yeah, let's go ahead and do 12 months, because that was a threat. Even if you're looking at the evidence, they're saying, well, this is an incredible threat, because there is no gun in this child's vicinity. Of course, no child should even be saying that. So there needs to be a consequence, right? And that's why I think we would be in favor of more local decision-making out there. But that's, that's the way it is right now. Yeah, I mean, it would take an advocacy strategy. And you have staff at the association who does that. And so maybe that's a conversation to have. Is there a friendlier legislator who can bring it? It's from a department perspective, it's the kind of thing where, you know, if a conversation can get started, then we can jump into it, provide facts and data and evidence to kind of back it up. But we're just not in a position right now to start a conversation like that. It's just not, you know.
No, it's just to, just to make sure. Most of the, I think, almost all of the instructions get, get used services.
For 12 months. And so that's different. It used to be like the rest of the school year. But what happened in this one particular situation is that it was like in May and then the kid went home and then they were like, he can't come back yet. And so then it became 12 months instead of a school year and. Yeah. Yeah, and it's, and you know, it speaks also to resource inequities across our school districts. That some school districts have the ability to staff and stand up an independent facility and some school districts don't. And so that is changing that educational experience that in those more resource districts, those kids who are expelled are getting in-person instruction still. Yeah, I mean, this, this is definitely a topic. I mean, you could write multiple dissertations about it. Because it just, everything is connected and it goes deeper and deeper and deeper. So I'm sorry to have better news for you on it, but I hope we can provide some clarity. Yeah, yeah. Thank you all for tonight.
Just want to mention very quickly, thank you all for your service, advisory council. Even within the last couple of months, we've received some great feedback from everyone in the group, this group. And so we want to follow up and make sure that that, those changes come along and that this meaningful. Do you want to, just especially with David, Joanne, Alinda, Julia, and Jill? You all are members who are set to roll off, actually in June, but we just had to be with you all my time. I think in years past, there has been kind of a natural transition to just continue. You all are amazing in that way. And so we always want to hold the, the study and valuable voices that we have on this council. We also recognize that through some processes that need to happen, we need an avenue for new voices to come into this space as, as advisors as well. So we want to communicate with you beginning of August, kind of next steps for them. If there's continuing to new membership on this advisory council, we will certainly communicate that with you. And or the avenues which new members are able to apply and show their interest. So we definitely didn't want July to pass without acknowledging that the, these term cycles did technically end in June, but knowing our convening schedule, wanted to lift that up here. So look for an email from Jody and myself in the beginning of August.